Where's Michael Gollan? 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 What could make me think that I could live on for love? What could make me think that I could live on for love? Now I see that I could never live on for love. It's real wonder in the morning, another sleepless night. I feel very alone with me and it doesn't feel right. And then it starts flowing through me from my feet right to the air. Just breathe, calling out your name. I want you back in my bed, my bed. What could make me think that I could live on for love? Now I see that I could never live on for love. What could make me think that I could live on for love? Now I see that I could never live on for love. Like a problem always beating the inside of my soul. Hidden feeling always deep in the touch they do so well in those places that matter. What could make me think that I could live on for love? Now I see that I could never live on for love. I can't eat, I can't speak, thinking about who will wait. Are you happy? Making me crazy. You were the best I ever had. What could make me think that I could live on for love? Now I see that I could never live on for love. What could make me think that I could live on for love? Now I see that I could never live on for love. What could make me think that I could live on for love? Now I see that I could never live on for love. What could make me think that I could live on for love? Now I see that I could never live on for love. What could make me think that I could live on for love? Now I see that I could never live on for love. Where's Michael Gollan? What the hell is he doing? Councillors, I open the extraordinary council meeting on the 30th of October 2023 at 6:04pm. I would like to ask councillor Sedg... Oh, sorry, I'd like to ask councillor Chapel to read the acknowledgement.
I'd like to acknowledge we're meeting on the land of the Bidjigal and Gadigal peoples who occupied the Sydney coast, being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to elders past and present and to Aboriginal people in attendance today.
And I'll now ask councillor Sedg to read the prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Randwick and Australia. Amen.
Amen.
I call for apologies on leave of absence. Nil. I have received some requests for attendance at tonight... To attend tonight's meeting via audiovisual link from councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Wilson, councillor Burst and councillor Luxford. Can I have... Please have someone move a motion as follows, that the request by the following councillors to attend the extraordinary meeting of council of 30th of October 2023 by audiovisual link be approved. Councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Chapel. And please let it be noted that these councillors were not able to attend in person. All those in favour say aye, or against I declare that carried. Councillors, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of prominent local resident Helena Carr. With a minute's silence, I will put forward a condolence motion at the November meeting. Thank you, councillors. We will now move to the address of council by members of the public. I'll read out the chairperson's announcement and privacy warning. In respect to privacy, to the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause 5.2 to 5.23 of the council's Code of Meeting Practice. Audiovisual recording of meetings is prohibited without permission. A person may be expelled from a meeting for using or having used an audiovisual recorder without the express authority of council. All members... Oh. Councillors, I've just finished reading that and then we'll move to the declarations of interest. All members of the public addressing tonight's meeting have a maximum of four minutes and wish to put their case forward with no extensions available. Presenters will be stopped when the four minutes has expired. Councillors may ask questions of presenters at the end of each public submission. Councillors, I did miss the declaration of interest. Are there councillors, are there any declarations? Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a non-significant, non-purinary interest. I ask that Mr Kelly record the full interests in the minutes. Consistent with my earlier published return and the ordinary councillor returns tabled at the October 2024... Sorry, 24 meeting 2023, I'd like to make the additional discretionary disclosure that I am employed in the New South Wales Attorney General's Office. I've had no professional involvement in this matter. I will be voting and request that the full declaration is recorded in the minutes. Please. Thank you.
Are there any further declarations? Thank you, councillors. We'll now move to the speakers, speaking against Dr Punit Singh.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for providing opportunity to speak today evening in support of paediatric cardiac surgery services at Sydney Children's Hospital Randwick. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of our medical staff council and the Sydney Children's branch of the nursing union, asking for your support. My name is Punit Singh. I'm the paediatric intensivist at Sydney Kids and I'm also Chair of Senior Medical Staff Council at Sydney Children's Randwick. Sydney Kids is a tertiary children's hospital managing children from all over New South Wales. We receive nearly two-third of the children critically ill from all over New South Wales, which are transferred via nets. We have provided children's heart surgery for more than three decades. Sydney Kids is the fourth largest paediatric ICU in Australia. For a population of 8.2 million, we should have two children's hospitals with fully functional cardiac surgical program. When we looked into our data last year, we had more than 1,000 admissions in our ICU. Nearly 50% of the children were within the 50-kilometre radius and the remaining 50% were all over New South Wales and other states. We look after children not only from the local suburb but from childrens all over Australia. Our Sydney Children's cardiac surgical program was paused for no justifiable reason. We submitted our data to the Royal Australian College of Surgeons and our data was extremely good and as comparable to the children's hospital at Westmead. We had independent reviews by Professor Willis Marshall, which recommended low to medium complexity cardiac surgery, which include cardiac bypass to be performed at Sydney Children's Hospital. Henry Review recommended cardiac surgery need to be developed in parallel at Sydney Kids. Prior to election, Minister Ryan Park, local member for Coogee, Marjorie O'Neill and local member for Kingsford, Matt Thistleweight, all publicly supported cardiac surgical program, including cardiac bypass at Sydney Children's Hospital. There was submission made by them to the Legislative Assembly to support cardiac surgical program, including bypass at Randwick. However, post-elections, we all staff at Sydney Kids were shocked to receive a letter from Minister Ryan Park recommending against the cardiac bypass surgery at Sydney Kids. This was contrary to the previous support for cardiac surgery, including cardiac bypass at Randwick. Cardiac bypass or ECMO supports low to medium, low, medium and high complexity surgery service. We are not going to talk about the low, low volume, high complexity cardiac surgery because we know that needs to be only performed at Children's Hospital Westmead. But what we are going to talk about, that the cardiac bypass or the ECMO service supports the low and the medium complexity, children with thoracic trauma, children with cancer involving the heart and lung, the children with pneumonia, sepsis, airway disease, the babies born at Royal Hospital for Women and those babies which are transferred from all over New South Wales. We recently received the children with trauma in our ED. Luckily, we had Peter Grant, a cardiac surgeon who was readily available to provide the comprehensive care to our patient. We had children from regional hospitals, which are initially labelled as group, but then when they came to the hospital found to have a major blood vessel problem. Dr Peter Grant, he was ready to operate, but then the letter from the minister said no cardiac bypass service at Sydney Children's and then this resulted in a risky and precarious transfer to Children's Hospital to Westmead, which was totally preventable. We had a three-year-old child with severe pneumonia who needed to go on ECMO because of the low oxygen level. Dr Peter Grant was in theatres operating. We requested cardiac surgeons from Children's Hospital for Westmead, which they mentioned we are an hour away, which can't wait for that long and not ideal without a cardiac surgeon. Our cardiac intensivist, Dr Award, placed the child on ECMO and the child went home successfully. Sorry, I'm going to ask for extension of time.
Yes, you have a minute's extension. Two minutes, thank you.
To... We need... Next, I'll go to the next one. We need to emphasise that the children are placed on ECMO primarily by cardiac surgeons in Australia and New Zealand. If ECMO is provided by other than... By other clinicians, we still need cardiac surgeon to facilitate and support the children going on ECMO. All childrens in Australia and New Zealand that provide paediatric ECMO have cardiac surgery, including cardiac bypass program in their hospital. ECMO service is a teamwork and we all need to provide teamwork together to maintain the essential services of providing ECMO through regular cardiac surgical program. Data from last few years showed that we have enough cases to be shared between Children's Hospital Westmead and Children's Hospital at Randwick. So far, we are able to safely provide the service of ECMO because we have the skill and all the trained staff and we have provided cardiac surgery for decades. Without cardiac surgical program, these skills are going to gradually decline and provision of ECMO services without a cardiac surgical program will become unsafe at Randwick. Sydney Kids currently has cardiac surgeon and all other team members which are available to provide cardiac surgery and ECMO. We need two fully functional comprehensive children's hospital for the population of New South Wales. Risk mitigation for any unprecedented pandemic like COVID or other infectious disease and natural calamities should be available. The strength of the hospital is from the services we provide to the children in the hospital. If we take these services away from the hospital, like cardiac surgery, safe provision of ECMO, we won't be able to provide safe services to our patient. We are spending nearly $500 million of taxpayer monies to develop this hospital. Parents are not bringing children to this fancy building, to see the fancy building, but to the services we provide within the hospital. Highlighting that next few years, children's life will be lost because of the services and timely management of children at Sydney Kids. We implore the Minister for Health to reconsider his decision and stop cardiac surgery, including cardiac bypass service at Randwick. We need support from Minister of Health in implementing low to medium complexity cardiac surgery, including cardiac bypass at Randwick. For the sake of children in Randwick and throughout New South Wales, I implore each of you to vote in support of cardiac bypass surgery at Sydney Children's Hospital Randwick.
Thank you, Dr Singh. Councillors, are there any questions for Dr Singh? Councillor Chapel.
I was wondering if you might elaborate a little bit on what other service was we would risk not having available to children in our area if this program was to be permanently centralized at Westmead.
There will be lot of service... There are a lot of services which are supported by heart surgery, by the ECMO service. It not only supports low to medium complexity cardiac surgery, but children's with thoracic trauma, when they come with a polytrauma, they can have trauma of the chest wall. They can have children with cancer involving the heart and lung. They would be compromised too. Children with severe sepsis, pneumonia, coming from all over New South Wales to us. Babies who are born with congenital problem or developing problem immediately after birth will be compromised and not only born babies born locally in this area, but those babies, those who are transferred from nearby places to Royal Hospital for Women. So there will be a big group of patients whose safety will be compromised.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza.
Dr Singh, The operation started, we realised we need a doctor, a cardiac specialist. I think John Howard impressed that on us the last meeting. Your unit is now closed. How long would it take to get a doctor from Westmead to Randwick or take the baby to Westmead for further attention?
Yeah, thank you. For the, you know, for the short of time, I didn't cover one last case, but the one last case we had was a child who was brought to us our ICU with a severe sepsis and the child had a cardiac arrest within an hour of arrival to ICU. We were doing cardiac compression and then our surgeon Peter Grant came in, put the child on heart-lung machine or ECMO. We can't, when you are doing CPR, you can't wait for a team from Westmead to come and provide that service. And I've worked in retrieval services nets for two years. I know how, what challenges begin. If the weather is bad, if there is a traffic jam or if there is anything, are we going to tell the families, sorry, like, you know, we couldn't provide this service because it was taken away a few years ago? So we are not, we should not wait for the children to die before this service, yeah.
Well, I can give you that time. It's 46 minutes. Forty-six minutes where a child is dying in his mother's arms, always on the table with a surgeon, I cut everything open and realises we need extra care. Forty-six minutes is a long time when it comes to human life. When that mother has carried that baby for nine months. The last thing she needs is to see her baby dying. Why? Because her government has broken a promise. A promise that was made by Marjorie and the others.
Do you have a follow-up question?
The question was... Sorry, I should put a question. Thank you. Sorry, Madam Mayor. I got carried away there. But in saying that, it's an issue you do get carried away with. The question I put to you, so there's 46 minutes. The question I put to you, so there's forty-six minutes in your professional opinion. You sort of answered it in, in a way, but that, that's an extremely long time when you're talking about the life and that infant, aren't you?
You know, it's not only life and death, but also the time period for which the oxygen supply and the blood flow to the body is compromised. So we are not only looking after children to save their life, but also we want to give them the best possible brain and, you know, functionality. So the longer we wait for these services to come, the longer it will take for the blood flow, uh, low blood flow or low oxygen level which will compromise the children's, yeah.
Are there any further questions? Counselor Hay? Thank you, Dr Singh. Counselors will now-
Point of order, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to point out that Counselor Parker just declared an interest and he stated on that pecuniary interest, non-pecuniary interest, that he declared at the last meeting and I've just had a look at the last meeting minutes. And Counselor Parker did not declare at the October twenty-four meeting that he had an interest in this item. And I believe that due to that fact alone, this declaration needs to be corrected.
Further to the point of order, a question through to the General Manager in relation to that, as to whether or not it was declared, but also in relation to the ordinary returns?
Um, my understanding is that the ordinary returns that was tabled for all councillors, that was included as that. I have to check whether there was a separate one for the last meeting.
I'm sorry, it's not. I have it on my phone. I was also present in that meeting and Counselor Parker did not declare an interest. So, I mean, that's on your conscience. If you want to sit here and tell the truth to a roomful of people and have it recorded that you declared an interest at the last meeting, terrible.
Counselor Hamilton will be voting, uh, on the minutes at the November meeting, so, uh, if you don't mind, we'll deal with it then if- Thank you. Um, so we'll now move to the Notice of Recision Motion NR five slash twenty-three, Notice of Recision Motion from Councillors Parker, Nielsen and Luxford against the Meryl Minnet Support for Pediatric Cardiac Services at Sydney Children's Hospital Randwick. Uh, do I have a mover? Counselor Parker, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Luxford. Uh, Counselor Parker, do you wish to speak to the rescission motion?
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I move this rescission motion, uh, and I do so for the following reasons. Uh, to begin with, at the outset, I'd like to state that I make no comment on what I believe to be is the very well-intentioned position as outlined by those who have previously spoken publicly in relation to this matter and I'm sure the very strong and long-held views in relation to that. I commend their passion to their profession and the service in which they provide to our community in keeping particularly the youngest healthy in what is a very tricky time in their particular lives. And I also commend the passion in which they have committed themselves to this particular cause. Uh, the reasons as to why I believe that this matter should be rescinded is that I have quite strong concerns as to the prudence of the motion previously moved in achieving the aims of the particular motion, particularly the reinstatement of pediatric cardiac services at Sydney Children's Hospital. Uh, I note that the previous motion, uh, which were, the Meryl Minnet as on the business paper, contained language to outline Randwick Council's concerns in relation to a decision of which the full information may or may not have been in the public domain as it relates to that. And I commend the drafting of that particular one as I think that it had the ability to achieve the consensus of Randwick Council in relation to that. But not only that, to put at the interest of the community who are obviously quite concerned as to their services in the strongest possible light in order to achieve those aims and the goals of that particular campaign. Unfortunately, I believe that this, uh, the motion which was, sorry, the resolution of council puts that very commendable goal at risk by firstly containing a range of points which I think in order to achieve the intentions of council should be rescinded. Particularly, I'd like to draw to the meeting's attention, uh, point three. Point three reads of the resolution which was carried and I think needs to be rescinded, that council's media channels, including Facebook, Instagram and Randwick City Council's website be used to promote the petition through its media channels, including Facebook, Instagram and the Randwick City Council website. Uh, the reason why I have particular concerns in relation to that is I think that it will put Randwick Council out of the service and actually asking for the reinstatement of these services, but also working collaboratively with the New South Wales Government in achieving the ends of our residents. I feel as a councillor, I have a duty-bound obligation to exercise my duties in representing them to the best that I can and I do not believe that were council to allow particularly point three to stand, that we would be doing both councillor service or the community in relation to this. Um, speaking to what I think should be moved, were this to be rescinded, um-
Point of order, Madam Mayor. I note that the timer is not on, so it didn't start off at five minutes. I think we're nearly there.
Counselor Parker, yes, Counsel Hamilton, I did note that just that moment as well. Uh, Counselor Parker, I'll give you another minute or so if you believe that will be enough.
I believe that should be sufficient. I mean, if required, I'll request an extension. It's a matter for the meeting as to whether or not they would like to provide that. Counselors, uh, further to that, I have to say that I have been rather disappointed in the way in which we as a council have conducted ourselves in relation to this. Uh, particularly as we are dealing with such a sensitive matter to the community. Uh, I, as an individual elected councillor, have no ability to make a clinical decision or am, and further to that, am not privy to the decisions of health administrators in relation to this. I think it would be prudent for us to rescind this particular matter and to receive the full information as was offered. Um, I think to essentially, um, to campaign first and then ask second would be a very, very ill-thought-out and ill-advised approach to do, particularly considering we're dealing with a topic of such sensitivity and importance to the community. Uh, and I, in good conscience, could not support that approach because I, I, I think that this is an issue far too important for a, a, any, uh, a, a, any jockeying in that regard and I think that we should be, when dealing with individuals' lives and the advice of clinicians, we should tread very, very carefully.
Point of order.
Thank you, Counselor Parker.
Jockeying, disgraceful.
Um, I'll go to Counselor Luxford as the second and then to Counselor Chapel. Counselor Luxford, do you wish to speak as the second?
I reserve my right.
Uh, Counselor Chapel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everyone in the gallery who's come along today. We really do appreciate the work you do and we know how important it is and when you ask something of us, I hope we can deliver. Um, which is why obviously I will not be supporting the rescission motion today. Um, what we've heard from people who know, uh, not councillor opinion, opinion of the experts in this room and in the publicly published reports about all of this suggests that retaining pediatric cardiac services at Randwick is essential. I, I obviously do not share Counselor Parker's concerns about the extremely deleterious effects of sharing a community-initiated petition on an issue the community is telling us that is important to them. That just should be the basic level of what we do for you. And finally, I will just say, as I said last time when we debated this, both of my children were born at Prince of Wales. Uh, my littlest has been in, um, the Sydney, the Children's Hospital there more times than I'd like to count, including in Niku when she was two weeks old and I was glad that everything was available to her at that time. We were lucky to not need it, but many other families have and lives have been saved here. Um, I, I think there's a time for receiving this information from the Minister for Health. We're not binding anybody here except to do, have conversations. Um, at any point in time, health could have approached this council and offered a briefing at any point before tonight. Um, and it's my understanding that hasn't properly happened. Um, and I think based on that, we can't keep delaying this in case they want to brief us. That's just too late. It's not good enough. Thank you.
Counselor D'Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to thank these wonderful people who most probably just come off from their ICU units and other duties, looking after our community to make some time to be here. And they're here because they know the importance of what we're talking about today. Today's debate and today's vote isn't about politics. If you look, there's people, ministers have made commitments that they're breaking. Uh, the parties, officials most probably said to their councillors, et cetera, oh, we better not support it because it's not a good look. But today is about morality, doing the right thing. It's about voting with your conscience. I spoke enough the last time and as passionate I, I am about this issue, it's hard to bring that passion back because at the time, I really felt the pain, the distress of that baby or that mother. But let me give a generic case of a mother who has a baby in her arms. The baby needs intensive care and it's slowly slipping away. She's had nothing she can do, even though she looked after the child for nine months in a womb. There's nothing she can do to save this child. She has to turn to you and turn to the government who funds this program to give her child hope. Counselors, this isn't about politics. This is about people. This is about community. Commitments were made. The local member in Coogee said, yes, we're going to keep the unit home. This is before the election, mate. The Minister Park, who is the minister now, said, yes, we're going to do this. Promises were made. I've learned one thing in life, when you make a promise, you look someone straight in the eye and you shake the hand and you say, yep, the deal is done. You trust people. Trust is a big word. And you want them to deliver. Now is the time to deliver. Those people that are here in the audience would have seen many times the look of mothers, babies, the elderly, who have little hope to live except for their intervention. We have the same opportunity here when it comes to these babies. Forty-six minutes is a long time. For a surgeon to come from Westmead or to move a baby there, this is a life in that situation. You know, we have a war in the Middle East and other parts and we, and, and part of it is about life. I said it the other day, le haim in Jewish, we all, in Hebrew, we say le haim to life. Because we value life. Life is very sacred and precious. It doesn't matter what faith you're in. The fact is that life should be valued. And this is what this vote is about today, valuing life. Look, you can have a fistful of dollars and you can make a decision and take everything out west because that's where the votes are. But the fact is, as Puniet or Dr Singh mentioned, this is a very integral and important part of the healthcare chain. Prince of Wales is well-known throughout the world, the Children's Hospital and other units are well-known. We are leaders in this field. Are we going to degrade this system? For what? A fistful of dollars? We have it in place. Let us do the right thing. Counselors, these young people, these doctors, their eyes are looking at you. They're asking you to do the right thing. They're imploring you to help them fulfill their tasks. These are educated, trained people. They can't do anything without the government's assistance, without the government's financial aid. Remember, this isn't about politics. This is about people and the saving of lives. I'll leave it at that, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Um, I'll go to Counselor Hay then Counselor Burst.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for, thank you everyone for coming tonight. Um, both my children were born at the Royal Hospital for Women in Randwick and we've only, they're very young. We've only needed to go to the emergency once, but the service was great and it was no big deal. Everything was handled very well and I'd like to thank you very much. We're here tonight because of a rescission motion and Counselor Parker said that it would put the people at risk if we started our own Facebook campaign and our own media campaign and I only wish that, uh, everyone just think back to twenty nineteen when the Labour Party was doing their own campaign of exactly the same type to keep these services alive in Randwick. The exact same campaign was done and not a thought was given to that, so let's just cast that aside. The reality is, there was a scare campaign for twenty nineteen that was saying the Liberals were going to cut this service and we did not. And then, six months later, the Labour Government has decided to cut this service. This is a stunning backflip of the position and it need not be entertained. Now, we have many capable new members of the Upper House that have joined us and one of, one of them is the Honourable Susan Carter, um, just elected this year. And she actually asked, uh, she grilled the, the Health Minister Ryan Park for five minutes on this issue. Now, there's, other than falsely claiming that this was the Liberal plan to cut the hospital, he's just continuing that plan. He ultimately ends, there's a few things interestingly, he talks about the Meryl Minnet briefly. But he ultimately ends by saying complex care should be done based on clinical care and volumes at one site. That site is Westmead. I understand Ms Carter that that has not been welcomed by everybody. Now, it's said right here in the motion that we are to move if this is rescinded, that council defer consideration until being briefed by the mayor and the general manager from the Minister for Health. We have the Minister for Health. He has said this on the twenty-sixth, that was a Thursday, in Senate estimates. We, twenty-sixth of October, yes, uh, we have, uh, it was in the presentation earlier, the letter saying he would cut the services. We don't need a briefing. It has been said by the minister in estimates and in the letter, there is no ambiguity. If there was some ambiguity, maybe, but there is no ambiguity. He is going to cut these services. This is just trying to cover up the Labour Party's failure to honour their own promise. And I urge everyone here to vote against this rescission. Thank you.
I've got Counselor Burst next and Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'll, I'll keep it simple. I'm a man of keeping it simple and common sense. Prince of Wales and Westfield Children's Hospitals are the two biggest children's hospitals in New South Wales, if not Australia. We have, we have a situation where a child injured in Coogee would take two to five minutes by ambulance to get to Prince of Wales. It'll take over forty-five minutes to Westmead and that would be in favourable conditions outside of peak hours. Um, so to compromise that is unacceptable. Um, and, and also I'd like to point on that, my, um, my learned, um, councillor's, Counselor Parker, who said that we shouldn't be talking about this because we don't have any, because he doesn't have any technical skills and so on, but, well, I come from a background of highly skilled technical roles. So, um, common sense tells you what's good and what's bad. Uh, both my sons have had visits, uh, to Prince of Wales Children's Hospital and have received exceptional service from experienced, um, logic, uh, experienced technicians and doctors. Um, this shortsightedness is, you know, to break a promise and to try and put all our hospital, basically all our hospital services into one basket is ridiculous for an operational sense. Um, and it will impact- And it will impact the acute, highly technical skills that all our doctors have. And not only do they have acute, highly technical skills, they are the mentors of the future. All the young doctors, they watch and know as they see these great technicians and surgeons and they learn from them. So not only are we providing a service, we're providing a teaching facility as well. So to even contemplate not having two sites in New South Wales is shortsightedness by our state Labour government. And it's, I just can't believe that they don't even think about it. And I call on all our councillors to not support this rescission motion. We need to make sure that we have these services at Prince of Wales. Thank you.
Councillor Wilson.
I move that we put the motion.
I'll second that.
I still have another speaker on the list. Do you wish to speak, councillor Wilson?
That was what I wanted to say.
Yeah, I did have one of the councillor on my list. Yeah, so we'll hear the next speaker.
No, it doesn't work.
I'll refer to the general manager. I will have to, the general manager has advised us to actually, we have to put the, put the... Yeah, so is there a seconder for the, that the motion be put, councillor Parker? Moved by councillor Parker, seconded by councillor Rosenfeld. All those in favour of putting the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? No. Declare that lost. The next speaker is councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In hearing the conversations and the points that were made around the table just now, one of the most concerning for us as councillors and for the council staff and for every resident that lives in Randwick is councillor Parker wanting to remove point three from this motion. We have had save Yarra Bay, we have had save Little Bay, we have had stop the incinerators. And it's council's job to get behind the residents. It's our job to listen to what you want, what you need, and for us to back you. Then we come here and we ask council staff, can you assist us in acting out the needs and the wants of Randwick residents? And they say, yes, we can. This is exactly what you've asked for. This is exactly what you're going to get. And if councillor Parker wants to undo Little Bay, Yarra Bay and save the incinerator, then he is making a massive mistake. We support you because that's what we do and we've been doing it for years. This is nothing new to what we have done in the past.
Councillors, are there any further speakers? If not, I'll...
Thank you, I waive my right of reply.
Thank you, councillor Parker. I will put it, all those in favour of the rescission motion, please say aye. All those against?
Aye.
Aye.
I declare the rescission motion lost.
There's a call for a division, please.
A call for a division. There's been a call for a division.
Yep, and councillor...
Seconded by councillor Chapel. So all those in favour of the rescission motion, please raise your hand. Councillor Parker, councillor Luxford and councillor Wilson. All those against the rescission motion, councillor Hamilton, councillor Pandelfini, councillor Nielsen, councillor Hay, councillor Chapel, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Olive, councillor McCafferty, councillor Burst, councillor Sedd, councillor D'Souza and the mayor. I declare this rescission motion lost. I declare the meeting closed at six forty-four PM.
You.